...order and the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. You'd all please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is approval of minutes from May 18, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second? So get... Any questions? Errors? Omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And communications and correspondence. I did pass out to the selectmen some information in the Vibrant Communities Initiative report. It's a rather lengthy report and I did want to call their attention to the existing, excuse me, to the market context and use analysis, which is quite a bit of information on the proposed scenarios that are in this report, which is on the Elm Press site. So I just wanted to reiterate, it's something we passed out about 10 to 12 months ago, but I wasn't sure if everybody had a chance to look at it. And the reason I brought it tonight is because, as was presented at last meeting, we have proposals for fiscal impact analysis that CERC, Connecticut Economic Resource Center, has provided to our Economic Development Commission and a preliminary proposal for an economic impact analysis, which would be another group that would take a look at the impact analysis that had been requested by selectmen, FLOOD and some of the other subjects as well. Just wanted to call your attention to that.
On that same, could I add one thing?
It's just information for tonight. I don't think we want to take too much time, so...
No, it's just one other page. I think the selectmen, now that they have the pack in front of them, should also look at page 16 where it says what Portland doesn't want. Dense housing.
Thank you.
I think that's relevant.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to say, Fred? I can't hear you.
Oh, yes. I have a question about, uh, some discussion about discussing Main Street as far as the parking and as far as the bike lane possibility, et cetera. Is that going to...
Yes, that is tonight as well. Yes. Yep. And I have maps to share with you and we have members of our Complete Streets Group here that is going to speak to, they are going to speak to us. And we also have something on the computer, I think. But let me first pass these out. I had sent these out by email earlier. And I'm not sure if, um, if it's on the slide.
I sent to your email. I don't know if you can access that or can we just, I want to look at the design.
Why don't we look at the design?
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Heron, Portland resident and chairperson of the Complete Streets Group, also known as CSG, since 2014. I'm here tonight to briefly speak to you about the Main Street repaving job being done by DOT. Last fall, when our group heard that Main Street would be repaved in 2016, we were very excited and hopeful that Main Street could become more complete and incorporate some of the national Complete Streets principles. Specifically, these principles would include making the street safer for everyone, pedestrians, cyclists, people with mobility challenges, transit users and motor vehicles, by calming the traffic to reduce travel speeds and allowing more room in the shoulder for cyclists and people parking, and encouraging more foot traffic that might patronize the Main Street businesses. So two members of our group met with a few DOT engineers and asked them to design a plan that would facilitate traffic calming, improve safety, safety of Portland residents, including children going to school, positively affect the business community, and do all this at no additional cost to Portland residents. After several months of internal DOT design meetings, DOT engineers emailed their approved design plan, which is what you're looking at, to First Select Women Susan Bransfield and CSG last Friday. We believe the design plan will achieve all of the goals I just mentioned. Over the past two days, my husband, Bob Heron, and I, who's going to speak to you shortly, have spoken with five business owners in the Village District, the principal of Biz, Lori Boski, and Park and Recreation Director, Sean Dwyer. All of them are in favor of the redesign for safety reasons of their customers, their students, parents and staff. They each had stories of collisions, near miss accidents, as well as the high speed of cars as they travel on Main Street. So now I'm going to let Bob tell you a little bit more.
Hello again. My name is Bob Heron. I've been a resident in Portland with my wife since 2002 and we've been members of this Complete Streets Group since 2014, so about two years. And I guess what I'm going to do is kind of present some of the points that we think are positive and that the Board of Selectmen should consider as positive points for our Village District with regards to this design that just came to us. And then I believe the design is actually on the computer and we can put it up on screen or if you are looking at that and just have some specific questions, I'd be happy to speak to it from what I can tell and what I've been able to kind of find out from the DOT officials. I think the intention is that you guys are to hopefully, you know, I'm sure some of you would be for it blindly, some of you are probably against it blindly, and some in between. So hopefully over this next week, you can come up with some questions and Kathy and I can come back next, I don't know if it's on the 8th or whenever the next meeting is...
Do you have a meeting on the 8th and I'll put it on the agenda?
Okay.
Because we got this late, late last week and with the holiday, there hasn't been a whole lot of time for people to reveal it.
Right.
So the map does and I'll pass it around so people in the audience can see it. There's a couple of maps here.
Susan, the 8th is a special meeting, right?
Yeah.
And I think the agenda was already posted.
No, we can repost it up to 24 hours before.
Okay, sorry.
Susan, can I ask, I was trying to locate this in the email, but I didn't see an attachment that I don't have. This is the, this is what you sent, right?
No.
No.
No, that was from Lori Boski. There's another one. That came today from her. But this, I think, came either, was it Friday?
Came this Friday. I think you sent it out maybe yesterday morning.
No, we got it yesterday, 11:54. Yesterday.
Yes, from you?
From Susan Bransfield.
Okay. This is easier I thought for me to see it here than here. I'm having a hard time. Yeah, it's small on that. Granted, Brian, I agree. But if I can, so we're not asking for a kind of hands-up decision tonight, but certainly if you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think the plan is to kind of give you a little while to digest it because it was, it's a lot to take even for Kathy and I and our group that's been working with this for a little bit. So what this is in front of you basically is, from a traffic calming thing, you know, we've heard of, you know, rumble strips, speed bumps, narrowing lanes. There's different things you can do to kind of try and slow traffic and make it safer. And if you decide that this is a good idea for the Village District, then it certainly will do that and provide some other things as well. Besides improving safety, we're hoping that it brings our Village District, either side of the streets, a little closer to each other. So from economic development, people will feel a little safer going side to side. What a road diet does is basically takes, we currently have, if you want to say, four lanes, two in each direction, northbound and southbound. What it will do is for about a little less than three tenths of a mile of the section, kind of, if you're coming northbound on 17A or Main Street, just after Rite Aid, basically you're going to be going down to one lane either direction with a center turn lane for left turns, basically. Take a right turn, you wouldn't be in it. And that will continue all the way to Brownstone School, basically that second intersection right before the post office, which right now is one lane going out, so that, there'll be no changes going further out. So when you're looking at the map, what it'll show is, instead of two travel lanes each way, one travel lane, each 11 foot, which is the new state of Connecticut standard, and then the center turn lane is 14 feet. So in essence, what that does is take the width of travel lanes from 48 feet, because we now have 12, 12, 12 and 12, to 36. So if you, simple math, which I'm fairly good at, 12 feet additional, six feet each way. Since both the center lanes and travel lanes will be marked with lines, there will be a defined traffic lane, which right now there isn't with the new marks, and it'll give an additional six feet for people that are parking to open up their car doors if it's parallel parking, or an additional six feet to pull out and get going if it's, what's that called? The other type of parking where you pull straight in, sorry, slanted parking, I'll call it. So when we brought this, as Kathy mentioned, to some of the business owners in the few hours that we had yesterday, and she had a little time today, and the school, they, you know, I'd say most, everyone we talked to was very enthusiastic about it. There were a few that we talked to that said, "Well, you know, it doesn't really make a difference to me." But basically our, on our sample, and it certainly wasn't scientific, most were saying it would be great. So we hope that you feel the same way on that. The points that I would make on it is that, uh, there is, as we talked about, there is no cost to this. The VIP project, so this is all kind of new for the state of Connecticut as well. To integrate this Complete Streets design work into a VIP project is something they're slated to do and they should be doing, and they do it basically at a town or city's request. Portland is certainly one of those designated towns as a small Village District where it was kind of on their radar to do that. So when we said, "Hey, could you guys come up with a design, see if you could do it?" They were like, "Yes." Again, it took well over two months for them to go back and forth, do different design plans to come up with it. But the main thing was the signaling that we have currently will work. They'll come out and they'll do the re-timing if they need to do that. They said it basically, we start at 66 and kind of come backwards to make sure that the morning flow coming in from, if you will, the Burger King side of 66 doesn't get slowed up. And there is no cost to the design work, no cost to the extra or the different striping created in the center lane. And if we don't do it now, we would obviously, and let's say two years from now we decide, "Hey, this is a good idea to do," not only will we have to unmill all the stripes that are there right now, we will have to pay for that. We'll have to go out and get a grant, we'll have to get a design, we'll have to do all that kind of work. So to me, it's kind of a simple decision, even though it's a, it's a time is of the essence decision for the board. And kind of in your gut, you're either for this, to do this for the Village District and to slow down traffic and that whole concept makes sense to you, or you don't. And it doesn't make sense to you. And if it doesn't make sense to you, I just ask that you think of those questions, you know, Kathy's email is probably on some of the emails that Susan sent. Send them to us, we'd love to come back next week. You know, no plan is perfect, so I'm not saying this is a perfect plan. You know, we're aware that there will probably be some additional congestion in the morning rush hour. That kind of, that's a given, they even said that. But the state would not have, this went through three designs, a sketch, a first design and a second design, and each time was met with a team of signal people and highway guys, and they all approved it as this is valid for this. You know, they didn't say, "You can't do it, this is a, or this is on the edge." It did take a while for them to come back, but they did come back with it. So I think at that, I'll kind of close with my comments and if there are any questions on the map particularly or something, Brian?
So I'm generally in favor of traffic calming, but traffic congestion is going to be an issue, so I don't know if anybody can sort of prognosticate what we're talking about. I'm having trouble reading the, that's here, but it appears to me that what's happening is, if I'm correct, that the two lanes on Main Street are being narrowed to one as you're getting onto the bridge? Is that right?
No, I noticed that in the design too. That, so what I was told by Tony Cersei, Emin was out this week, so, who's his manager, he said that, so if you kind of look back, Brian, at the 66 intersection with Main Street, at that point coming southbound towards the bridge, there should be two lanes that are showing, right, kind of a...
Yeah, so if I'm coming down 66 and I'm taking a left toward the bridge, now as I'm approaching the bridge...
You're still going to have two lanes. And I noticed that, I noticed, that was one of the things, yeah. Because the other thing I noticed is that they still had marked, oh.
There you go.
Yeah, the striping shows it down to one lane.
Yep. So on the very far left of that, I don't know if someone's directing, but down by the, that is not supposed to narrow down to one lane, is that's where you're talking from, Brian? I'm not sure, but I'm far left. There's a bridge over here, somewhere down there, right? But we're not there, yeah, there, right. That is not supposed to happen. Yep. Oh, look at that. Look at that. Cross this one. Red line. Yep. Red line.
So that, none of that is accurate.
So that is not supposed to be accurate. That's one of the things, when I talked to Tony today, I said, "You know, there's a couple of things that don't look exactly right." And we discussed this Friday. He said, "Well, he said, 'There might be a few tweaks.'" He said, "That's why I want you guys to look at it, come back and tell us what..." That certainly is one thing. The other thing I noticed, Brian, is that here, it said that there are all 12-foot lanes and the new state lanes, that everything is 11 feet. So I think all of this, this is 11 foot, that's 11 foot, and it's supposed to start back up here. I don't know if someone can control, so if this is the Rite Aid building, this is the shadow in front of it, this is the dentist office, I believe that's the funeral parlor. So right as you come there, it opens into two for the main intersection of 66. So it's basically from this point back to Brownstone where it's a single lane with this turn lane, the left-hand turn, it's going in either direction. So it's, this section, I believe, from here down to Brownstone is about three tenths of a mile, so it's a little under three tenths of a mile. Whatever that figures out to be, I don't think it's 1,000 or 1,500 feet per cent to do that. And again, what I was saying earlier is that you kind of can see it here, instead of having one lane that's going to kind of clip right next to this, you're going to have an additional six feet for all of these cars here, which I hadn't even thought about till right now, you know, maybe that allows us, if people want to do this type of parking, maybe there's even one look for that. But the main thing is that we were trying to create a little extra line for bicyclists coming down this area, as well as for, I can just use this for intersection with Lori Boski at Brownstone. There's a lot of people when they're dropping off at Brownstone, they'll park right on the edge, buses have trouble making a round or clip as well as cars coming out, they will see it. So have the extra six feet of buffer to basically sneak your car out, whether you're coming out forward or here to back out into it, should create a little addition to it. So your six feet of buffer is where? From the sidewalk to the... Basically, yes, at this line here, so these three lanes, if you will, 11, 14, 11, 36 feet. Right now, side to side, we have 48 feet going right through from here, because 12-foot lanes is what we have. So you, where were the bicycle lane, you were talking about? Well, there's not going to be, you know, so this is the thing, we asked at one point to get, so you can get a marked bicycle lane all the way south. The feedback we've got from the DOT, as well as from Rick, is that once you do that extra bike lane, then the town has to maintain this right. They're not eager to come do that. I don't know what that would cost, but it's still an extra hand and a neck. So we're hoping that right now, because we don't have this defined, we call it a right shoulder lane, you know, to define that, you know, right now you, we have, if you want to say, these two lanes, there's just like the dash right down the center and there's, this is over, you know. So we're hoping that that kind of guides people that, okay, there's my traffic lane, you know, and then it opens up to two, and then that creates an extra six feet. Although that, I guess I'd have to think of the distance, but that suggests to me that that's dangerous, that bikes are coming down there and there are cars parked there. Right now, it's really dangerous. [laughing] It's almost like we're promoting, I think, because of the idea to promote bike riding, right? But you're doing, but then you got people opening doors and I mean, that's how I see it. You're right, bikers have to be aware of that, but right now, it's very limited, that, you know, it's, it's very dangerous to go down there. That's, you know, again, in talking to Sean, the park director?
Sean Dwyer.
Sean Dwyer, you know, he was like all over this with Kathy talking today because he said, you know, "I'm trying to figure out a way to get people to not only be on the Main Street area, but also be going down to Brownstone Park, being able to go from where he is over to the school, these playgrounds, different things." And he said if it was a wider shoulder to be able to do that, I feel more comfortable having kids do that with me in a summer program, after school, all that kind of stuff. But you're right, as a biker, you will always have to be able to mount. The other thing that... That just seems more dangerous to me, driving in that lane with cars parked there than driving in a lane, a travel lane itself, but... Keep in mind that bikes do have right of way to travel in a traffic lane. That is state law in Connecticut. You know, so they can have that, and then cars are supposed to, they have, they are able to go out in the lane and do this up to three feet over to get around the bicyclists. So, you know, I don't, I guess it's arguable which is safer, which is not, to me, to have a defined lane for a travel lane for a vehicle and be creating an extra six feet on the side here, that's, you know, to me, an eternal amount compared to what there is right now, which is anywhere from a foot to maybe, and keep in mind, this is some of the widest area on Main Street. So Bob, what are we really talking about then? If a car is parked there, two feet or so? There, yeah. Great thing. It's going to, it's going to depend on where you are, but right now, so... If the car is there, in other words. Right now, Brian, we have, if the, if the 12-foot is right there, you're going to gain six feet. So in my mind, you're gaining five to six feet almost all the way along this. Again, if you go down here by where Middlesex is, which I think is, is this guy right here? So it's, you know, it's, it's not set for this.
You're probably...
A little further down.
Well, the width of a parallel spot is what, eight or nine?
Anyhow, some of the areas, Brian, as you go down here, it does narrow in a little bit, so you won't, there won't be a quite six, six-foot area. You know, there's, they kind of brought it in when they did some of the manscapes, I think, they kind of like pulled out the sidewalks a little bit to make the crosswalk a little shorter. And that is something else that Lori was talking about at Brownstone, that for the kids crossing here, you now are going, instead of a 48-foot travel lane, you've only got 36 feet to really cover as far as where cars could possibly be coming or setting or waiting to turn. So she was very excited about that. And here's, this is the end of the parking lot where she was talking about, people can park, I think, up to here, and said when they do, buses coming in in the morning for the drop-off, very, very close, because that's the route basically that they've got here or this way, and they're going to get off, it's the exit route. Did they suggest any other alternative for a bike lane or just those things? There's no way to do that? So again, within the scope of the VIP, again, we presented it, "Hey, we're doing this thing that we do every 19 or 20 years. Can we implement this at no additional cost to the town?" No. You know, could we ask, no, could we ask them to put in a dedicated bike lane? We probably could, but I don't know if that has to be five feet, six feet, and I don't know if there's a certain number for that. And again, the whole Main inside, it really seemed to be very, that was going to be a challenge. Main is consistent, painting a line down the... Free stripe on every couple of areas, yeah, maybe put a little biker person on there, you know. Again, I don't think the paint's the expensive part of what other people within DOT have told is that it's the cost of putting policemen out there to stop traffic to do that, unless it's kind of piecework type stuff. Again, I haven't looked into it, so I really don't know what that cost would be, but if you have some inside track on that, I would love to know. I don't. I would think that that would be the limit, but... You would think, right? And I, and I don't know, I mean, I'm just looking at this for the first time. It just seems to me unsafe to be promoting bikes to go in that lane where you got, and then you're talking about people backing, so we had some cars backing out there, slanted, they're, you know, you got bikes coming down, people backing out. It just seems to be more safe. As far as I know, I don't know in Connecticut, but it is legal to ride a bike on the sidewalk, so if the children and their family, you know, younger members, they can do that, you know, again, our sidewalks are a challenge, but you know, on the side of the school is, they're better probably, you know, straight back to the door. I didn't think that was true, but if that is true, you can make a bike on the side of it. It is, it is, and I was surprised. And again, I think this is Connecticut, I don't think it's like Portland, I'm surprised to be, and I don't, I don't think there's an age.
Now, this is the plan the state's okay with, like, the, I'm looking just at the Fairview Street intersection there, that you couldn't, I don't believe you could make that turn with a large truck without going right back into the, taking a right out of Fairview. There's, I find it hard to believe you could even come close to staying in your lane, taking a right without...
Well, that's a good question. I'd go back to that.
Yeah, I, there were a few, my other, there were a few of those radiuses that, same with the Middlesex Avenue radius, I think, I think that's a stretch also. Yeah, that you couldn't, now picture, these have to be designed for a tractor trailer to turn, not a normal car. I think most cars would make it, but this is a state, state essentially highway, it's got to work for traveling for everybody. Further down, 208 Main, did anybody bring up the question how, if you're coming off 66, taking a right, and you want to take a left into 208 Main, which is next to the old Tierney Brothers?
It's down here.
Yeah, oh, you passed it. Okay, you come, you come off 66, you take a right, and you immediately have to stop now to get a left into 208 Main. So essentially backing everything up, because there's only one lane, back up a little to your left to the air. Yeah, keep going, keep going, boom, you have to get across there. To me, that's a, that's a tough one. How, like, if you're coming off 66, are you...
Do you think a lot of people do that now?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
208 Main, yeah.
There's a lot of people...
Yeah, that's a housing development. And the state, right now, everybody knows, okay, don't get in the left lane because somebody's going to be taking a left. So even the people going straight, you're going to lock this whole intersection up, in my opinion, you know. But if the state says this is great, I, has anybody asked, like, this apartment?
So right now, just, you know, so this area right here, which this is, I think, their, their front, or this is like the tractor trailer, I think they kind of would do. This will still be, you know, open for you.
Right, that gives the radius that I was referring to, and the other, all intersections need that same radius in order to work for that. That is probably a 53-foot tractor trailer, and that's the model they would use, but, and I think a lot of the other intersections, you couldn't, I'm not sure they work.
I'm not sure that they do now, either, correct?
Right. Right, but I'm more concerned, honestly, for a backup standpoint, I've lived in Portland 40 years now, for a backup standpoint, right there, everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of people know to stay out of a left lane, there's going to be someone taking a left, that, that would essentially just stop everything.
Well, you know, like I said, the, no perfect plan, right? You know, and so if people are coming down this way, would they have to kind of route back over here?
No, 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 or Main Street, or Main Street. If you're coming off the bridge, you're down to one lane already. You're going straight, you've now backed up the bridge and/or 66.
So how is it different than what's going on right now?
Because there's two, two straight lanes, so everybody knows, don't get in the left lane.
But they still have to cut across the same thing, it's the exact same problem?
No, 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 not if you're going straight, there's two straight, there's two lanes. You have enough room to get over now. You can go from 66, get your car fully out of the other travel lane and take a left into 208. You would not, that happens now, and going straight, there's two lanes. You know to stay out of the left lane, there's a lot of people that take lefts.
So I think that's definitely something that I should raise with that.
Oh, without, about that and the radiuses?
But I don't think, and again, just my opinion, I don't think, I don't even know if there are 50 people back there, how many cars?
Oh, no, it's, we get a lot of accidents now with the small lanes and the breakdowns. There's such an area that you're going to be concerned with.
So what's a lot?
So, so, yeah.
We do 250 accidents a year.
But, I mean, at that place, like, what's, what would you attribute to, to that specific location?
We probably do a dozen if not more right there.
So should that, should a turn be allowed then?
The most, I mean, I don't know, that's maybe another topic, but, you know, it's that's... You have time for you to make an entrance.
That's pretty tight, I think, regardless, even if you have the travel lane, right?
The only entrance we can make with a firetruck, that's normally the concern. So we should look at the plan too, and I'll, I'll take a close look at, because out of Because out of the twelve hour calls that we do here in the town portal, probably eight hundred of them would be used that pathway for our, for us. So four lanes makes our progress down that roadway much easier than two. Which, you know, I mean, it's approved by the state, so I'm sure they looked at that. And we'll be using the center lane, which is now a turn lane for our emergency vehicles. Which, which people in the turn lane, they need to move into the shoulder area, which if you change the parking in the shoulder area, they use this less rules, so.
Yeah, so I thought, I don't change any of the parks, but you're right, I think people would saw the exit for the right, get out of the way of busy parking.
Now, Bob, I get, the best point on that turn, on the left turn, I'm just trying to visualize the, the thing. Right now, you're coming down.
You're coming this way.
Across the main street, there's a light, but there's no turn signal, white turn signal, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't know.
It's just a straight green arrow, so.
Go into here, you know, because the traffic light's here, so there wouldn't be anything there.
No, there's a left turn onto sixty-six, are you saying?
Yeah, I'm coming down, I'm coming down to sixty-six.
Okay.
She got, um.
Yeah.
There's a left.
Yeah, the housing is, the housing is on the left, and there's no, and they're saying that there was no turn signal. There is a turn signal, a left turn signal.
Left onto sixty-six, yes. It's a straight lane and a left.
Are you talking here?
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking.
Yeah, sixty-six, yeah. Yes, there's an arrow.
An arrow on the sixty-six, is that what you're talking about?
I sit on it every morning.
Fred, were you talking about a left as you're coming off the bridge into?
That one, I'm going, yeah, right, going into that parking lot.
No, right now, no, if you're coming from the bridge, there's just two lanes. There's not a dedicated left lane, but obviously, to get into two oh eight, that's what people take the left.
To get into two oh eight, if you had, if you had an arrow, an arrow turned for ten seconds, that would alleviate some of that.
It's past the light, I think, too far.
Yeah, there's a little.
Yeah, I think if you'd sat.
So they'd already be lined up.
Right, I see, you're trying to figure out, yeah, a solution.
Yeah, this, yeah, I don't know if there's a traffic light.
No.
There are a lot of accidents there, but I just, I don't know.
What I'd like to do is put this on the agenda for next week, and we'll have further discussion. Since this is just an item under communication, there's some decision tonight, we'll bring it back.
Can I ask one other quick question? Where is Duncan Doance? That's, that's.
Right, one more, one more, left, left, right there.
Yeah, right here.
Those there.
And again, to my knowledge, this is supposed to be two lanes, and I don't know why they did that.
And, and I'm sure you already got the question from the state, I would hope, and if not, I would like it for the next meeting. If we do, you know, narrow these lanes down, does that then narrow the state's responsibility as we go back and forth then? Who's responsible for what in the future?
By knowledge, this is all part of the V I P, so they're, you know, covered with their striking and all that.
No, 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 my, my question would be, are they then, is that the new travel portion is all they're gonna be responsible for in the future?
The thirty-six feet.
We don't have an answer.
Okay.
We need, we need to, on the agenda.
Can I ask one other question? What's the timing of it in terms of, we're gonna have to.
Well, if you're gonna do it as part of the VIP program, you have to do it next, you have to make a decision next week. If you're not, then you, you would forego the opportunity for them to pay for the work. And they did this late in, in the game, and it's not something that was done early on. But it isn't.
As much as it could, you know, it turned out, but I, I, my understanding, where Kelsey said, is that the paving should be done by like the end of next week. You know, so I'm thinking that the striking would be the following week. It all depends on weather and all that kind of stuff as well. I know they've started the, I saw it earlier today, like the edges of the road, so they have run, they've done stuff yet. But I would expect, you know, to probably be, not by the end of next week, but again, I don't know if it would weekends the strike. But the following week, it should be during the strike. And, and certainly they could start, you know, again, I'm guessing we could request, get a start for four corners, because that's, you know, kind of a sure way this way. But because it is coming off of sixty-six, they might wanna do this first, you know, I don't know.
Are the design people available to do the alternative factoring in, including a bike lane in that timeframe too?
I could probably throw it out to you in a second, yeah, yeah, I could, like, some time or another, so I'll send a couple of questions for them, if that's fine.
I know somebody from the fire department chimed in, but could we also have the, the police department weigh in, in case they had?
They already did, they don't like it.
What was that?
The lieutenant already looked at it, and he has serious reservations. I already showed him. There, there are always gonna be concerns, and certainly, safety wise, you have to look at these things, absolutely. His first, watch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all for doing it. Thank you.
Have a comment? Next item is proposed prohibiting storage, disposal, or use of fracking waste. We had a public hearing here tonight, and you have an ordinance in front of you, so I'll open it up to the selectmen for their consideration.
Not surprising, it's a win.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm gonna be very brief tonight, I'm not gonna oppose the ordinance, by the way, but I do wanna add some comments I'd like to make. I, as I, as I was looking at the ordinance before, I had, had and still have some concerns about the language of the ordinance. Having said that, you know, we, there was certainly a, um, evidence of a lot of support for the ordinance, um, from the townsfolk. I looked at it, and I kind of still look at it from the viewpoint that even if we pass, when we will, you know, it'll be passed. With the passage of the ordinance, um, due to existing state law, we will not be able to do what we're not able to do today. In other words, nothing substantially changes. And the argument that the citizens' public health is somehow gonna be jeopardized, and this is something I, I wanted to clarify as far as my comments. By failing to act on the ordinance, I think is not accurate. I think that, uh, that's not borne out by the facts. We haven't, we have in place, um, uh, state ordinance, and, and the state has some expertise, they're gonna be working on it. I have a little more confidence that they'll come back with regulations. So, th- those were some of the reasons. And then I looked and I said, okay, well, there's no fracking going on in New England, and there's no storage that I'm aware of, or storage of waste anywhere in New England. We have three jurisdictions in Connecticut out of one hundred and sixty-nine that have passed an ordinance. So clearly, there's not a whole lot of fear that public safety is at risk. So I just wanna clarify that, because I think there was some discussion about the priorities. And I certainly, if I thought at all that there was, the, the public safety was in any way at risk, I'd, you know, have jumped the board one hundred and ten percent. But I, I don't see that. And having said that, the ordinance certainly isn't gonna hurt anything, uh, in terms of, um, the, the town. I did make a comment about, um, I think in terms of being business friendly, and it wasn't to say that you'd say, okay, being business friendly is more important than public safety. What I was trying to get at was the fact that we have an ob, I think, we have an obligation to try to do what we can in terms of fostering business opportunities in a state. And every time when you do something, it's another, and you add something, it, it creates, or it could foster or create an environment where, when people are looking at the town for, for development, I'm not talking about fracking development, I'm talking about appropriate types of business development. They're gonna say, ah, Portland, Portland, there's two ways of looking at it. And when it came up tonight, I think Andy pointed out the side that there will be people who will come because the town has that proposal. Or they may come because the town has that proposal. On the other side, there may be some folks that are looking to develop business, and heaven knows, we need business, we're gonna grow our brand list, that. We'll have the other side and say, I don't know, Portland is, you know, they're, they're a, a town that seems to be overly aggressive, and really, how friendly are they gonna be toward business? So I, I just wanted to put that out because I wanted to clarify what my position is. But anyway, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to oppose the ordinance I will support.
Thank you. Yes, um, I wanted to thank Andy for the presentation again this evening, um, and I was happy that we got information from Don Mitchell. I am going to support the ordinance, and Fred, I, I think that it's a great ordinance, particularly because it is going to, uh, address public safety for our residents. And I, I don't look at it as being business unfriendly. I think it, it talks to our need to be cautious with what happens in our town, and that we are, we are about, um, protecting our folks as best we can. I, I'm concerned on a greater level that the trucks that carry this material are not identified in any way. And, um, may I ask Andy a question?
Sure.
Andy, do you know if there's any move afloat to identify trucks, um, that are carrying fracking waste nationally, statewide? Has the D E E P looked at it?
So just, just to make sure that I, I got that correctly, is there a movement to get that hazardous waste designation on?
Hazardous, yeah.
Okay, um. This, this is mostly educated guesswork on my part, but until the exemptions that oil and natural gas exploration production, until those are either qualified or lifted, or however you call it, then, um, the waste material that comes out of those activities would not be required to have such designations. I'm trying to think of of a way in which that would come about without the exemptions being lifted, and I, I don't know.
So, so first responders would not know that they're approaching something that has potential to be hazardous?
That is correct.
Um, do you know about, um, whether the drivers of the trucks have to carry any manifest with them? About the potential risks of the fluid?
The only designation that I know of that is required on transport vehicles is residential waste, two words, that's all they, I'm sorry, not residential waste, excuse me, residual waste. But that's all that I'm aware that they're required to have.
Are there vehicles that carry other materials, um, that have potential to be hazardous without, um, signage indicating such?
For, uh, in issues of fracking materials?
Other materials, just any other material that's hazardous or has potential for hazard.
If, you know, for, for, I'm sorry, for non-fracking or for fracking?
Non-fracking.
Non-fracking, I, I would imagine that, um, all kinds of regulations apply, uh, to those vehicles. I, I'm not, that's not an area of expertise.
I'm not trying to put you in.
And that's okay, I, I would think, Ben, you would probably know, uh, quite a bit more than I do about signage for that.
One example, a septic truck isn't placard.
If, if I may?
I, yeah.
Jen Siskin has mentored us through this process for the past year and a half. She's with Food and Water Watch, and she's, she's our go-to person when we don't know something, so if, if it pleases the board, I think Jen would have a more appropriate response or a clinical response. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Jennifer Siskin, and I'm a local coordinator with Food and Water Watch. And to answer your question, um, nationally, there is no movement to label the trucks that are carrying the waste. However, when we passed a temporary moratorium in the state of Connecticut two years ago, that moratorium would designate future waste coming into Connecticut, those trucks would have to be labeled as hazardous waste. We would be the only state in the nation that labels those trucks as hazardous waste. The problem that we have is that the waste is not labeled in the state of origin, so we need to be concerned whether DEEP is getting the correct information. There are multiple subcontractors that work on a drilling site. There's a subcontractor that deals with, um, injecting the wells. There's another one that deals with cleaning off the drilling platforms. There's another one that deals with bringing in, um, uh, portable units to partially treat the waste and reuse it over again. There's another one that deals with removing the waste. There's centralized waste treatment facilities where multiple contractors can send their waste to. So because there's so many layers and levels, that's why we're of the opinion that there is no way for the state to adequately track this waste cradle to grave. There's also been problems with drilling contractors providing misinformation to the state of Pennsylvania, and then being found out much further down the road, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Siskin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Motion made by Brian, second, second by Kitch. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda has to do with a resolution for approval for the Board of Education to enter into a four-year lease agreement for office copying equipment. And as we would be entering into a multi-year lease, there would be a need for this board to send the, the resolution to a town meeting, a special town meeting. So I will, um, read into the record, which I think you have on a gold piece of paper. The Portland Board of Education needs to obtain eighteen photocopies for use in the Portland Public School System. And whereas A and A Office Systems, a Connecticut corporation with principal place of business in Middletown, wishes to lease said photocopies to the Board of Education through an equipment lease purchase agreement with a financing company. And whereas A and A Office Systems is an approved contract vendor for photocopies by the state of Connecticut. And whereas the Portland Board of Education and the Town of Portland have reached an agreement with A and A Office Systems to lease eighteen photocopies for a forty-eight month term at an annual cost to the Board of Education of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and five dollars, which amount includes principal and interest. After which, the Board of Education shall own the photocopies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Portland's Board of Education enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement with Delage Landon Public Finance LLC, the financing company designated by A and A Office Systems to lease and subsequently purchase eighteen photocopies from A and A Office Systems, the lease period of which shall be forty-eight months, at an annual cost to the Board of Education for the term of the lease in the amount of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and five dollars, including principal and interest. Be it further resolved that Susan Bransfield, the first selectwoman or her designate, is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said agreement. And as I said, in accordance with our charter, all leases that are in excess of a year have to go to a special town meeting. So I would ask that there be a motion to approve a special town meeting. The date earliest would be our second meeting this month, which I believe is fifteen of June at seven o'clock.
So move.
Do we have a breakdown of the interests?
I know that Tom told me it was three, I believe he said three point seven five percent, or three point, excuse me, I think he said three point four five percent.
I could ask a question, Susan.
Sure.
So it's seventy-three thousand dollars annually?
Yes.
Okay, so two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars over the four years?
That is what the resolution is, yeah.
So sixteen thousand dollars per copier for each of the eighteen? And it's a lease, so I assume the buyout is minimum like a dollar each or something like that? If it's gonna be owned afterwards?
It's paid for over the period of time, Mike?
Okay. And what happened, the existing copiers that are there now, I mean, I know we're gonna talk about this in the next meeting, right? But is it okay to ask questions now?
Well, you can ask a question, certainly. You're not, you're not approving this tonight, you're sending it to a town meeting, and some of these questions, I'm certain, will be asked.
Because I've never bought a sixteen thousand dollar copier, so. And what, what happens to the existing copiers, are those that are there now?
I think that they would be turned in, maybe some of them can be used if we own them.
That's good.
I mean, I'm not as familiar with each and every copier in the Board of Ed because I'm not working there.
Is this money that is, is being, is responsible for on the Board of Ed budget? They just need us to approve because it exceeds the one-year lease?
Correct.
I got you.
You're not approving the actual.
Then.
Allocation of the dollars, I think you're correct there. What you are approving is the town meeting, which would allow the multi-year lease because they are only authorized within their budget for one year at a time. So if you're tying the town to a four-year commitment, you have to go to a town meeting for that.
And that's where you have to sign off on at least beyond one year?
The town meeting signs off.
Do we know how many copiers total they have? No, 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 not, the reason I'm asking is, I wouldn't wanna, if we only own eighteen, from a business standpoint, I wouldn't wanna replace all eighteen and then be in the same boat every, you know, five years from now, ten years from now.
Or do they do sixteen every year?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, um, how often, how many units do we have, and what's the stagger pattern in, okay? That would be my question.
If you're not ready for the question, we can put it on another agenda. Because I don't, I honestly, I don't have the answers, no, I don't.
No, 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 I don't think we need it, we can ask it at the next meeting. I think we can still keep that.
You can ask it at the town meeting then?
Yeah, I would think, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
But you're sending it to a town meeting, so if you're not ready to send it, you can wait. I don't want you to feel you have to send it at this point if you don't feel you're ready to do so.
Can somebody kind of talk, it, it just strikes me that a sixteen thousand dollar printer is, is a Cadillac printer, it's going crazy. And eighteen, and I'm just trying to, I mean, it seems, maybe I'm just, it seems like an awful lot for the Board of Education's size that it is, but I don't know what we're printing and what we're doing, but that seems crazy to me.
I was told that these are substantial photocopies, yes.
Right. I mean, they're, they're crazy, you know, the sixteen thousand dollar machine is doing crazy amount of work, so, and eighteen of those types, I just, it's hard for me to fathom. lot of work, so, eighteen of those types, I just, it's hard for me to fathom why you need eighteen of those as opposed to, you know, three of those, or six of those, or whatever, whatever it is you're doing, as opposed to the regular copier.
In all fairness, in all fairness, I don't think we know the breakdown, maybe you need to know, maybe there's a twenty-five thousand dollar one, and there's a ten thousand, you know, I don't know, I don't believe this tells us that, and if you want that answer, maybe we should get it.
And does it include all the supplies that go with it?
We don't know, and, and maybe, maybe we want to know whether they're trading in the old ones and whether that number reflects, so maybe we need more, I don't know, whatever.
Whatever your pleasure.
I would request that someone comes in and just explains what it's about, what it's for, what we're doing, why we need that money, and maybe it makes the perfect sense in the world, but it just strikes me as...
Right, and maybe there's a trade-in with the old ones, maybe they'll knock some money off, take away.
I will, that's fine, but I will also tell you that in terms of the Board of Education trying to get the schools ready, I think they were, they are under as always because a lot of the staff will be leaving June ninth when school ends, so they're trying to get a lot of their work done, I suggest that before the school year opens, but as always, I like to bring you as much information as I can, and I, sorry, I don't know a lot about photocopiers in the Board of Education.
Well, I agree with that.
So, you have a motion, it's been seconded, it's on the table, are you ready for the question, or are you withdrawing the question as protocol? Who made the motion, Sharon?
I made the motion, so it either has to be withdrawn.
I don't think it was seconded.
I don't know.
I believe it was.
I thought I heard seconded.
Does anyone remember seconding it?
But if no one, if no one claims it, then there's no motion on it.
Okay.
Well, just to be safe, withdraw it anyway.
Can we wait, do you want to withdraw your question, I mean, your motion?
If there was no second, I will draw it.
Kathy?
Can we have someone come though to the meeting on June fifteenth?
I will certainly ask that, I will certainly, but I, I know they wanted to get it done, but it doesn't appear that we're ready for the question, so.
And if you can just let them know a few questions that we had, you know.
They'll be in the minutes, so I think that would be helpful, thank you. Any other? Is that it, any other questions? So we'll move on to the next item.
Try again.
By the way, you could slide this into next week, right? I know that it's a special meeting.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, sure, we'll change the date to June eight, is that right? Thanks. Yep, seven thirty, I made it seven thirty because a lot of our members have ch-. No, we're not doing a town meeting, right, so it'll be seven thirty.
On the special.
This is, this is not the town meeting, this will be a special Board of Edu-, Board of Selectmen meeting, so we will put it on the agenda. It will not be a town meeting, right. We'll also be talking about, and infrastructure, okay? All right, so, we're moving on to number nine, and Chief Shea is here, you have a resolution in front of you, authorization to use capital non-recurring fund balance to purchase a fire vehicle, and this also would be to set a special town meeting, and I will read to you, excuse me, so everyone, everybody in the audience has a copy. Whereas there's a great need for the fire department specifically, excuse me, the fire marshal's office, to have a single vehicle that separates their gear from the driver's cabin for health reasons, stores needed equipment for field investigations, and can be accessed by the fire marshal and his deputies as needed, and whereas the van that the department had been using is up for sale as it no longer functions for the department's needs, and whereas the town has used GovDeals to sell assets, and those monies are deposited in Fund Eight to be used for needed capital purchases, and whereas the truck cap, slide-out bed, warning lights, and communication changeover has an estimated cost of thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation from capital non-recurring fund balance in the amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and authorizes these funds the increase to account number zero eight dash one four one dash zero 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 dash eight nine zero four zero, which is Vehicle Fire Department Marshal. So, in plain words, we have excess equipment, and rather than just putting it up in a tag sale, we put it up on GovDeals dot com, and so people can do sort of an online auction, you can bid on these items, some of them have a minimum bids, some of them don't, and then, once the period of time is born under which you can bid on these items, then you're rewarded the sale, and you purchase whoever the purchaser is, and you pay the town, and then the town puts those revenues into what's called Fund Eight, and that allows us to do additional purchases as needed within the capital fund, and whenever you make a change within the capital non-recurring fund, you have to have a town meeting, because the budget approves a capital plan for one year with another four years as part of the five-year plan, but if you're changing it, and in this case, we would be taking revenues and assigning it to this particular department, it has to go to a full town meeting for approval. So I'll open it up for questions, and Chief Shea is here, if there's any questions that he might be able to answer, thanks for coming, Chief.
What, what type of vehicle is it?
Strictly, it's, it's a, it's a pickup vehicle.
Obviously, things have changed, most of the vehicles now that we're looking for public safety related to not only the fire department but emergency services, other than the PD is going to be grouped and called Fire Department. This particular vehicle is something that's been looked for, for, I was on Capitol for eight years, probably every year that I was on it, it's been ten at least, it's primarily a pickup truck, it's very similar to the one that the state uses right now for all their fire marshals, it's going to be equipped, from what I could see, I didn't work on it, with just about the same type of equipment, but of course, you know, much less for what our usage would be here. Currently, the van's out of service, that's up for auction, I had thought it sold, but it might not have. Some of the funding revenue came from my fire truck, that was just recently sold, and that went fairly quick, and we had talked about that when you granted us the ability to buy a new truck and combine a few. So, I, I think, you know, speaking on behalf of the Fire Marshal's Office and what they do on a daily basis, and what we need them to do to support us, I think the purchase is a good one. And what it's going to do, it's going to put all of their equipment, which is in probably three different places right now, into one unit, we will house that piece of apparatus, because that's what it'll be called, in our firehouse, which will be secure, it'll be maintained hopefully by my members as well as the Fire Marshal's Office, they're limited, I have many more. If we were to use it or need it, I'm certain that we would do so, but I don't see any reason to, because it's going to have the ability to secure evidence, and right now, the Fire Marshals are using the cruiser that I used for six years, six years ago, which was an old police cruiser that was used for ten years. So it really doesn't make any sense to be able to secure evidence in a trunk that's not rain tight, environmentally tight, and that's pretty, that's a pretty important part of their, their job to be able to preserve evidence in the event that it has to go to court, that's, and I'm sure many of you are aware, it's very easy to prove that, the possibility of evidence that could have been tampered with. So that's one of the big things, to get it all in a unit, and that's kind of certified by the state to do so. Carstages between gear, we try to keep our gear away from our living spaces in the Fire Department, we try to do the same thing with the Fire Marshals, they're in the same type of contaminants that we are when they're investigating a fire, so this will give them the ability to keep their gear separate from where they're driving the vehicle. But most importantly is the delay that we have trying to get them to my scene because they're spread out all over, so I think it's going to help us tremendously in the long run to get them activated and to my scene to start their investigation a little early without driving around and trying to find their equipment, which is some in the office in the town hall, some at the firehouse, and some in a vehicle in the town parking lot. So I think that's, overall, if I helped you any with what needs to be done here.
But Chief, why isn't it stored in one place now?
I have some of their stuff on the rescue truck, and as you know, Brian, and others do also, the rescue truck is soon to be gone as well, that was part of my capital plan to reduce our rolling stock and put more emergency equipment on less vehicles so we can do our job more efficiently. So the rescue truck is housing most of the stuff that was on the van that was donated to us fifteen years ago by Eversource, or at that time CLMP, that is gone mechanically, it wasn't sound enough to keep on the road, so we decided to push that off to GovDeals for sale. Because our rescue truck, our new engine rescue, is basically doing most of the work that our rescue and an engine used to do, we were able to free up some space and put some of that equipment that was on that van on our rescue truck, but it doesn't have it all. And the rescue truck hopefully will be up for sale, my plan is to use that revenue towards a new purchase of an engine, that'll be scheduled.
No, in other words, you were suggesting that there's stuff at the town hall, stuff here, why doesn't, isn't it all just?
I think it's security, I think it's security, the way they set it up, I think Ray would have to speak on that, but I know there's cameras and other equipment that he can't secure in the back of the vehicle that's parked in the driveway at the town hall, the vehicles at the firehouses are all parked inside, which is secure, much more secure in a building.
There's no firehouse to put a camera?
Um, yeah. I just use the camera as an example, but I don't know how much equipment, I know what's on my rescue truck because I have to inventory that, and that's a locked cabinet now because we can't have access to that, because again, that has some type of possibility that they would, you know, hold evidence, they hold evidence for a few days before it's, they get the proper paperwork to pass it through to be tested. So right now, the rescue truck, which is, it can only be driven by those who hold a license to drive a heavy truck like that, can do so.
Do they have any specs on this truck, or this is just like a?
They do, I just saw those specs, saw the specs a few days ago, and it's, it's through the municipal purchasing, purchasing current contract, I believe it's two thousand sixteen, which is considered a leftover now, and it's a basic unit that is provided to the state, I believe it's a Chevy, it's the Chevy fifteen hundred, nothing grand, two fifty or three fifty range, it just needs to carry, but it has the cap and the slide-out to hold the equipment to, to better access the ability rather than climbing into the back, so, that's basically all, I know there's some communication stuff that has to be changed over that's existing, nothing new, and some proper warning lights and stuff that'll have to be put on it. So.
Would we still be keeping the old Fire Marshal car, or would you need that also, or no, or?
No, I, I, no, this will also be used to do, to do their daily inspections when they do those. So with that said, I think with the extra room and the ability, because of the four-door capability, they'll be able to store some of their inspection sheets and miscellaneous paperwork that they would use on the road every day rather than going back and forth to the office. My job's a little different. So personally, I think, I mean, when you, when you look at what's been done over the years, it's time to do something more efficient, as far as a vehicle, that's what they work out of, I mean, they're in their office doing permitting and reviewing, and I review an awful lot of prints with that office, but that's desk work, a lot of their work is done in the field, and particularly when I call them, I expect them to be there pretty quickly, because we can't move on a scene in the event that something needs to be looked at by a Fire Marshal before we can do some additional investigation, or, you know, get through walls to fight hidden fire, things like that, without, you know, disturbing what could be either a crime scene, or, you know, some other reason of why, you know, why we were there. And the industry has moved in this direction an awful long time ago. If you were to look at even our surrounding towns and, and many city and towns in the state of Connecticut, they've all transitioned into this type of vehicle, and I think they're all falling suit from what the state has decided to do for years, and if you look at the state itself, that's all they drive. So they've been dependent, and they've been proven to be a vehicle of choice, and that's basically the way they've gone, so I think in that regard, I think that's what the Fire Marshal right now is looking to do, is to try to piggyback off of that success on the state side and do the same. I, we do exactly that when we're looking for fire apparatus and emergency response vehicles for the town, we try to go based on track, you know, a track record from a city that probably does three or four times what we do to see what we can do, so, you're looking at a twenty, twenty-year, twenty-five-year vehicle based on, you know, what they're going to use, so. Yeah, the issue, and I think, I think you've talked about that, is to try to look for a used vehicle, then your municipality, unless they, I haven't seen any, that would be available under that municipal pricing, so you're sacrificing the savings and then buying a used vehicle where you might be better off spending a little more to buy that new vehicle and keep it that much longer. But I don't know, you know, we've bought some used vehicles in the fire service, and we've done well too, and we're placing those now, so. But that's the usage, I could tell you, that's what they'll be using it for.
Gas, gas engine?
Yes.
How many miles is put on this one here? Sorry.
I couldn't, you know, on his, I know there, there's, is there four, Sue, Fire Marshals now, was a Fire Marshal and three inspector, one inspector and two assistants? So, I don't know if his office is occupied each and every day, but I know when they're there, they're on the road doing inspections, because I know they're very busy, trying to keep up with what they have and trying to complete stuff that hasn't been touched for years.
But miles, miles, no.
No.
It's the Town of Portland, so the only time they would go out, Chief, would be training?
If you want to.
Seminars and things?
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have, yes, they'll have a lot of conferences, they'll, they have their mandatory training that they do, have to do every year, which they'll probably use that vehicle, which they should. I mean, I, my chief's vehicle, which I'm in, as you know, I do four hundred of the twelve hundred calls a year, I mean, I do probably eight thousand miles a year, you know, between my meetings, responsibility at the office, and calls, so I can't imagine that it would be that, it would probably be much less than that, maybe six.
Would the maintenance of his vehicles fall under the town garage?
Yeah, just like all are, all ma-, yeah, every vehicle in town falls under Rick, yep.
Bob, it's an ongoing need, right, as I recall, a few years ago, a similar proposal was in because of the aging equipment, so this is a follow-up, several years later, clearly you still have the problem of...
Yeah, he does, he's been, that department's been asking for a change in vehicles for eight years. Yeah, because the, the request came to us as Capitol Long Range Planning members, and I was sitting on that commission at the time, so I do remember the, the need to kind of change out of a car or a used vehicle that was, they were always in a vehicle that was a leftover or replaced cruiser, very difficult to get around in the winter, this will have four-wheel drive capability, and access to, I think, some of the areas that I, I don't access unless there's an emergency, but maybe that are under construction that they're doing inspections on, and they don't have... and they don't have, um, quite as good access to get in with a car that they would with a truck. So there's, there's the emergency side of what they do, which is limited. And then there's the inspection side that they do for the town, which is probably the biggest part of their, their business.
Do you think this is a priority of other, over other fire departments?
Well, my priorities have been met. Um, your, your, this year's approved budget will replace one of my ailing and highest-response vehicles for medicals. And I hope to get that accomplished as soon as we can, because we lost that in two different occasions this weekend due to mechanical failures. So, mm, I, I have no issues with my plan. The issue that I have, and, and, and I think Tom is fully aware of it, Sue is, as well, some of the money that will be spent on this is coming from the sale of apparatus, from my specific department. And I, I just want to make sure that we continue with our plan to move forward to replace, um, some of the apparatus that I had picked, that I didn't get this year, that I hope to do next year. Some of that revenue from the sales was going to go towards that, so we need to kind of think forward that. We, we are spending. We're spending money that was put back into funds to be used for this, so it won't be there next year. That doesn't mean that there's projects and requests that won't be there as well. So on my side, that's just, but I, w- I'm for the transfer of that money to make this department whole, because, uh, they do an awful lot for us. Every inspection they do has the potential to save a life of a firefighter. Because when we go into a building that they inspect, we go in the dark when it's on fire. They go during the day when they see the hazards. Those hazards are conveyed to us in a pre-plan so that we know before we go in that particular building of its hazards, so that we're fully aware before we get there in the event of an emergency. So they do a lot for us. They really do. And I think they're just looking for a better and easier way to do it. And I happen to agree with probably putting them in a safer vehicle that they can put all their stuff in in one spot. And I can house it in a safer environment that's not sitting in a parking lot that has to be plowed, and that's readily available to be taken to an emergency if they do need so.
What color is it going to be?
Not my call.
If, if please send this to a town meeting, then could we just make sure that the fire marshal could be there to answer questions? I mean, it's nice about him, but, yeah, you shouldn't have to answer-
Yeah, wait till he gets his bill.
Yeah. I just think it would be good. He is out of town.
He is. He's out of town. He really wanted to be here, but- He went fishing.
He didn't tell me where he went.
He didn't tell me either. I just told you he's fishing.
Yes, we will do that, Captain. But you, just, do you want to make a motion to send it to a town meeting, which would be-
So we, and we have room to occupy that vehicle, because we've made changes over the past few years to reduce our rolling stock, which gives us a little space, which is nice for him, at a small fee.
I would suggest June fifteenth at seven o'clock, here in the Mary Flood Room. Is there a motion to that effect for the town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Michael, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the town meeting for June fifteenth at seven PM here in the Mary Flood Room? Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I'm sure Ray thanks you. You're welcome.
Next item, um, number ten, the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary. Um, committee is doing very well, as you will, um, recall. They are going to have a big parade on September tenth here in the town of Portland. It'll be similar in terms of its route that the, um, Memorial Day Parade is starting in the gildersleeve section and then coming down and stopping on or about in front of the Old Town Hall, because Family Day will be on the green behind the Buck Foreman Building. So that's where it will end. And there are going to be some expenses associated with that endeavor, as you know. I wanted to go over with you a synopsis of some of the things that committee has already done. I'm going to start with, um, some of their income. This board gave them five thousand dollars from contingency. And they have, um, put money into, um, or I should say, they've also received some income, and that would be from a sale of baskets that they have made. Um, there was a number of deposits made, one thousand five hundred eighty dollars, one thousand six hundred dollars, sixty dollars, uh, more recently, four hundred dollars, and a hundred and eighty dollars. So as far as income is concerned, um, it's an extra three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars that they have brought in. And their expenses, excuse me, for the banners that are downtown, um, and they go out to the Triton Plaza, one thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and forty cents for the banners, two hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents for one basket order, then two thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars for another basket order. They've ordered some T-shirts that they're going to be selling, so they're going to have more income. They purchased eight hundred seventy dollars worth of T-shirts and three hundred fifty dollars worth of buttons, souvenir buttons, and then another basket order for a thousand dollars. So their total expenses are six thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and one cent. So when you balance it, it's about two thousand five hundred six dollars and ninety-nine cents difference between their income and their expenses. I should say their revenue and their expenses. What I am, why I'm bringing this to you is so that you know that they're active and they're busy, and they're doing lots of good things for our anniversary. The other thing, um, is that while you, uh, you, you allocated five thousand dollars from the contingency fund, they have spent more than five thousand dollars. But remember, I said over three thousand dollars of that is money that's come in. So in terms of an accounting matter, I wanted you to be aware that they have brought in revenue. And so they may be expending that revenue from their, from the contingency. There are sufficient dollars in there for them to do that. So I just wanted to let you know, while the expenses coming out of contingency will be more than five thousand, it's because they've brought revenue in. So as long as that's okay with you, there's no action you need to take, but I did want to let you know that. Because it is, um, for some of the newer members, it's our tradition that we, that we always bring back to you the use of contingency. We don't just use it, but we bring it to you and let you know. Um, other groups are also doing activities. I don't want to, um, not let you know that, so there's lots of other activities. But their organizations are putting up the money, and then they'll take in whatever revenue to counteract the book that they're making. And I think some of the other groups may be doing some other activities too. So the next item would be a discussion, and our economic development chairman is here tonight, Ellen. And remember, Ellen came, uh, last meeting to talk about an Economic Development Commission proposal from, uh, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center on fiscal and economic impact proposals. And I had handed those proposals out last night. Some of you may have been able to bring them with you tonight. Um, I also brought tonight, um, and for a second, or third time, depending on how many, um, copies have been put out, but the BCI report also has a market, context, and use analysis, which is pretty deep in the report, so I just wanted to bring your attention to that. And, um, I'll turn it over to the Selectmen for discussion, and Ellen would be available for any questions or comments that you might want to make while I open it up.
I, I guess, um,
Yeah?
For clarification, I was under the impression a study, uh, needed to be done, at least from the Planning and Zoning Commission's perspective at the meeting when they withdrew their application. And I do believe what we're discussing is a costly, um, study, which, in my opinion, would need to be done. Um, but I just urge everybody fully comprehend that if this study that we're going to agree to pay for is going to be used at the Planning and Zoning Commission for the text amendment, or for any text amendment, that's what we discussed, um, then it should not and cannot be site-specific. So, um, unless we're doing something differently here, this whole thing says Brander Place, Elm Crest all over it, and if we're trying to figure out what the financial impacts to Portland would be on this type of text amendment, if that was the driving force for Brian's comment, uh, for a study, it, I find it hard to believe that this board would agree to pay for a study that then couldn't be used at the Planning and Zoning Commission because it was site-specific. So I would just, um, want to know the Board of Selectmen's opinion, whether, if we are doing a study, which I believe there's been quite a few members that have talked about it, uh, I would hope that the money is spent wisely and then is, is able to be used for the Planning and Zoning Commission to make their decision. I don't believe we would want to pay for a study that just tells us about one site and can't be used anywhere. Um, so I would, a- and if we are going to get into this proposal, um, I, I don't want to go through page by page unless you want me to. Things, things like, I'll be brief. Things like, uh, permits and, and one-time utility connection fees, I don't believe should be in our, um, in our study. There's quite a few things. And if we, when we do go out to bid for a study, I would hope we give some input on how we should go about it. Uh, in the past, I've, I've asked, as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals, to, to raise our fees, which they did, because they weren't recouping enough money. It was costing the town more than we were getting. So I was under the impression that all of these fees are, are pretty close to what it costs us. I don't believe we are deliberately trying to overcharge any developer or any builder for permits and fees. We are supposed to be covering our cost to, uh, uh, to encourage more business. So this report wants to use the revenues from that as part of the equation, which to me, you can't. There's quite a few things like that, um, that we should discuss and talk about, um, you know, moving forward. Same with, uh, fines and violations and this and that. There's going to obviously be a cost to the town when, when those occur also, so I don't believe that would be on the revenue standpoint. And then in the report, um, there's a few spots where it talks about the, um, you know, capital costs, for example. It doesn't even mention, um, schools. It gives you the bullet points that the greatest liability to the town is recurring maintenance, and then the bullet points don't even mention schools. So, back to, if we are going to do a, a, a study, I believe we should get it right, uh, get some input from everybody, what we're looking for, for accurate. And for example, this study wants to include the developer. The developer can, in any case, in any scenario, in any property, tell you whatever you want to hear from a revenue standpoint. Well, I'm going to spend forty million dollars or whatever. Oh, well, if you use those numbers, it looks good. The reality is, we have to have a study done that the developer does bear bones, because that could be the re- reality with a building. They're not required to put in granite and stainless steel and all of this stuff. They are only required to build a building that meets code. And I believe our study should then reflect those numbers, so we get an accurate number. So there's, in my opinion, there's a lot of things that, and I could talk on that. So I'm just going to stop. I would let, you know, my, my earlier question, would the board want to pay for a study that then couldn't be used in a text amendment? I would want, I think that's the first question that we should all discuss, and then go from there on all my other bullet points.